Order, uh, handle stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order roll call starting on my right.
Councilperson Josh Sherman.
Councilperson Brenfire.
Mayor Kevin John Cannon, councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Algen.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additional from the table?
We got, we got a pretty full slate for you.
I'll vote to approve.
Motion to approve. Second, we have the second, Craig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. Approval council meeting minutes as of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
You here?
Yes.
We got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. Finance and budget, we got the accounts payable. We got the additional accounts payable listed in there. We got a big stack tonight. Any questions? Your finance officer Kelly, please.
I just wanted to mention that the check for one hundred fifty-three thousand first National Link of Omaha was for the twenty fifteen assisted living bond, the annual payment for that. In case you don't know, it was kind of a big check, so it'll be paid off next year, actually. And those payments are offset from lease receipts that we received from River Estates. So, just wanted to leave a note on that one.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll take us reading the motions in general business. The first thing on the motions in general business tonight is a public hearing. And a public hearing. Amending chapter thirteen to include canvas. The planning is already commissioned. No, it's second. You want me to go into public hearing right away? Does the wait set up?
You can read it first then.
The planning zoning commission has recommended the attached to be included in the city zoning ordinance, chapter thirteen. The areas of the ordinance that are highlighted is proposed language to be included in the various sections of chapter thirteen. Staff recommends that the city utilize an interim use permit process rather than the conditional use permit. While both require a public hearing, an interim use permit differs in that it does not run with the land and cannot be transferred to new owners unless specifically authorized. The planning commission and city council will still have the ability to establish conditions during the public hearing process similar to a CUP. However, interim use must include a defined termination point, which will be established at the time of approval. This will require a follow-up public hearing for review and potential renewal or discontinuation. So, I'm going to close the regular meeting now, open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Regime oral. Gerald?
What's that?
Any written oral from anybody?
Nope, nothing.
Mayor, do you want to speak on it? Are you here to speak on it, or?
Do you want me to speak on it?
Would you want to highlight a little bit of the ordinance, please?
Yeah, I can.
Well, I was in the public.
Baron Schutter, six oh three Michael Circle. It's been a while since I've been here. Hi, everyone. So, I have the wonderful honor of working with city staff on getting our canvas zoning ordinance together. For those that do not know me, my name is Baron Schutter. I work in canvas policy. I've been in that space for about ten years. And I've seen a lot of ordinances throughout the state that are bad, and that's like ninety-nine percent of them. So, over several months of conversations, I think we started back in November of last year, looking at what are the highest risk activities? And how can we, as a city, keep some tabs on those? We decided in conversation to move toward this interim use permit as a way to have some additional oversight. But then also, in areas that it made sense, we just made allowable uses as well. So, everything was based on risk, safety risk, risk to neighborhoods, and how that was kind of laid out throughout the city and the zoning. Happy to hang out, answer questions.
Well, first off, I would thank you for all the work you've been doing with this.
Welcome.
Uh, the other questions I have asked the other day, and somebody, I'm sure, I don't know if it needs to be asked here or what, but do we have just one permit for the city?
We don't have anything else.
We don't have any.
It's dropped, right?
What?
It's dropped, the county's going to drop, so we might not have any permits.
Or we could get five or six. So, but as of now, we have not heard anything.
That's for retail, that permit would be? Do we have to have permits for cultivation and all this? Or don't we have to worry about any of that?
That's all included in the zoning ordinance. So, your cultivation, manufacturing, specifically, I think in whole zones, we're part of interim use permit.
No, but what I'm asking, Mayor, is do we have to have a
Yes.
draw for every one of them? Like, they're doing this draw for who gets to have a retail store or whatever.
No, no. The state will license the cultivators and manufacturers who can establish wherever they want in the state.
We've had probably four to five calls on different various private properties. There's probably three in town that they've called about. And they were all for retail.
You guys have any questions?
I know, I know the interim is like, how long would that typically be? Like, a year, five years?
Um.
Or, I guess it kind of depends on the owner and that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, I let it kind of vague in our ordinance. I've seen it be like it triggers upon sale of the property. I've seen them be with a time period, and we kind of left that open for a case-by-case basis. With an ultimate, if the property is sold, if it's a less seed that's using the property for that purpose, that has the IUP, they need to come back within six months and re-up their IUP with the new owner.
I would probably suggest two years.
When's the draw for the county? Do they, I can't remember what they?
I can tell you, I know they've been, yeah.
They drew eight, was it eight applicants so far?
Yeah, eight were, eight were drawn from the micro-business licenses, and then they have a separate drawing for mezzo businesses and retail license holders. And the county allocated those registrations based on the number of applications in each category that the state received. So, they kind of just like divvied it out where eight of twelve would have represented that number of state applicants.
Any other questions here? Any questions from the public, or?
Actually, I'm actually one of the persons that are striving to open a retail business down here. Because the other ones went for dispensaries. They already have those out, as you stated. I was just a little confused. Are you guys going to have a lottery for retail also? Or is that just not applicable to the dispensary ruling or rules? That it has, because it's until.
I love how you guys are looking at me. The city delegated its registration authority to the county, so you must have a county registration to operate retail in this row.
As far as I know, I got a partner that already had taxes to her go. Uh, I don't know if I'm talking with who, but I guess it was approved as a retail. And we also have a building that the landlord is actually waiting for the approval to give us to go ahead. So, it'll be the options, either breaking ground somewhere if allowed, or renting a space to do retail.
Were you, did you have a registration application in with the county?
Yes.
Were you in the micro business?
I was in the, uh, I was in the previous one. Because, uh, I guess they put me in the wrong category. But no one would have taken it. They vote, but it's like that's just millions of dollars just to open a dispensary. It's like, mm, no, that's too much.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to connect with you after the meeting, if you want. I kind of like your specific situation, if that's all.
This is basically the first reading tonight for the public, so no decision, real decision you made.
Yeah, because I go to the county hall, so they told me that the registration will reopen on the eleventh, and I think the reviews of their processing is going to be done on the twenty-second.
Right? Phil?
I just want to thank Baron too, because this is new territory for all the cities that have been sought out. She struck a good balance between the state law, which now allows it, and then working with the county, since we're delegating a lot of our authority and working side by side with them. And then, of course, more specifically, our zoning, which is ours. And so, at least for this first foray out into it, and it can obviously be subject to revision if we run into issues, but hopefully we've set a good startup situations.
Thank you, Baron.
Thanks, Baron.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I wasn't closing the public hearing. Back to the regular meeting. As I said before, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and we brought back to the council on August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, excuse me, meeting for adoption. All right, that'll take us to Barri Cave Estates. Lot A, and I'd like to see the split. City received two applications from Barri Cave Estates LLC for two lot splits. The first to consider involves dividing all lot A into four parcels. Parcel G will be needed to the current homeowner of lot eleven. The remaining three lots will be included in the future adjacent lot sales. The remaining portion of all lot A, which includes a pond, will then be needed to the city. The second to consider involves dividing all lot C into four parcels. These parcels will be included in future adjacent lot sales. The planning commission held a public hearing on August fourth, and we're recommending approval of both of these splits. All right. Craig, you got anything to say about that?
So, these are just the easier sided like this, and
A lot C, a lot A.
Just go straight, straight back, like, just their little lots?
Yeah. I imagine that's what you're going to do in our jail, is deepen the lots on those?
Yep. Back to the road.
Be more desirable. Peter? Any other questions or discussion on this? From anybody here at the table? Have we got anything from staff?
Nope.
All right. That being said. Council action requested will be to split it into two actions to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash a resolution approving a lot split of all lot A, Barri Cave Estates. We have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
A second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. The second action will be to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash a resolution approving a lot split of all lot C, Barri Cave Estates. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries also. All right, that moves on to Mendoc. Uh, sixty-three and Shuman Drive traffic lane.
Lots changed in two weeks.
Yep. Mendoc Amendment of Understanding. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, the council approved a partnership agreement with Mendoc District Six for the highway sixty-three and Shuman Drive intersection, traffic signal. Since then, the staff of District Six has years of computer discussions, particularly regarding the reallocation of funds. The attached MOU is now being presented for approval. Short-term traffic signal cost breakdown. Total cost eight hundred thousand. Let, excludes power construction administration at eight percent. Mendoc will be two-thirds, five hundred thirty-three thousand. City one-third, two hundred sixty-seven thousand. Questions or discussion about that?
When they say short-term, was it discussed like, short-term or not?
We still call it temporary. That's short-term, temporary, could be a year, could be twenty.
It'll be definitely permanent mast setup out there, just like you see downtown, as opposed to the cables or anything.
For short-term.
But the short-term could last two years, four years, six years.
Twelve years, ten years.
Where could this get started, then?
When can it?
Yeah.
So, they're looking at August of twenty twenty-six.
To have it installed, at least there.
Next August.
So, we're already completing the plans and specs. We would look to bid them this fall. Materials are a little more timely than our regular street construction, and that would set us up for spring, summer construction.
And this is a change from fifty-fifty, correct?
Well, remember way back when the ADA, ten, twelve years ago, started this process? At that time, Mendoc said it'd be fifty-fifty, because each side takes their two wings. Well, in the time that's transpired here, uh, this will be the one-third, two-thirds thing.
So, the council actually requested just authorize Mayor King and City Administrator Shumel to enter into the memo of understanding with Mendoc. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. Next item, resolution approving advertising for bids for Legacy Drive. City Engineer Robert Gonty has been working with BP Pipeline to update the plan's specs for Legacy Drive Northwest. At the Monday, August eleventh meeting, Jen has received approval before, but submitted the plans as discussed. Staff is now requesting authorization to let that forbid once formal approval, BP Pipeline is received. Questions or discussion?
Though BP is still rubber stamped yet.
They have not rubber stamped it yet, correct? We had verbal compliance yesterday with the concept, but my staff still had to nail it down to actual sizing of pipes. And so, we are fixing up those plans. And Dan said he was going to get them done today, so I'm forward to actually do the permit on. But we will have those sent in this week. Hopefully, since we've already verbally talked it through, and they like the direction we're going, we will get approval. And this request is then to just allow us to go right into bidding procedures instead of waiting to come back.
You gotta get the, the guy gets the approval first. That's what she's doing. If she has to give you the D's. Any other questions or discussion? Looking for a motion to approve of resolution twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing advertising for bids for Legacy Drive Northwest?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry it. Best of luck, Jenna. All right, next item is equipment agreement with Homestead County. Tax group's line, the annual equipment agreement is submitted by Homestead County. This agreement covers equipment operators. The city will need to use them. This year, we saw an increase in each line item, which was to be expected. Public Works Director, Brandon, approval got there. So, they're laid out for you what the rates are. And I don't know, I guess in the seventeen years I've been here, we've used it very little, haven't we, Sean?
Just a backup.
Now, if you don't like the rates, we just don't use them? Yeah, we're very fortunate that it doesn't really problem. One of our public works directors, the director of many feels these rates are the rates. That's the way things are right now. Any other questions or discussion?
I'll vote to approve it.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us on to the final item here. We have approval of library page pages. After interviewing a number of candidates, we're recommending Reese Nelson and William Tyler Smith. Will it be Ron William or Tyler?
Tyler, that's my first.
He hired his library pages. And Nate, the reason is?
They're awesome.
Probably losing one or two, or?
We're adding two of them, starting in college in the next two weeks.
I'm glad they're awesome. All right, any other questions from the table, discussion? Action requested is to either approve or deny Reese Nelson to be hired for position of library page at page rate two, step one. And Tyler Smith to be hired for position of library page at page rate two, step three. Why step three on two steps?
Uh, he's grown up, uh, so we can add him, do more stuff. He has more life experiences. And he's like a stay-at-home dad, getting back into the force.
Well, be agreed, would I be?
Uh, like a beast. I mean, three is our floor, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Everybody wants to make a motion. We got a motion to approve, we got a second? Jeremiah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry it. That's going to take us out of motions in general business, because the mayor's got some reports, the mayor's report tonight. City, like I said, there's sympathies to the families of Doug Ferguson, Robert Bernard, Bob Farro, Pat Musman, Brad Musman, Marty Musman, and Ed Doby. Tough people for our citizens. Uh, Night to Unite, that was last Tuesday night. We had some pretty good parties, pretty good turnouts. Justin and the sheriff's department showed up. Girls all around. Brandon, all the fire guys showed up. Really made the day for a couple of them kids, or a couple of them. Uh, we really appreciate that you guys will come out and do that for us. Same with Justin and the, and the Homestead County. Bill had a good time. Hope you did, didn't you, Bill?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, those ones were all nice.
Yeah.
We actually got quite a fair number of compliments on what's all been happening around town.
We did. We thank the people that put on the parties. They, they went through a little work. Some of them were quite the parties. They're getting bigger and better every year. All right. Brad Boyce, he's got a new gospel, gospel concert to be held Sunday, August seventeenth, at two P M. Is that at United Methodist, or is that at the amphitheater? Or was it at?
Methodist.
United Methodist, all right. Turnout, if you've never been to one of his, does he do this one Elvis style? Or is this a whole different deal? I mean, he is Elvis when he wants to do Elvis, I can tell you that. Stewie Cruiser's car shows have started. They're every Friday evening until late fall. Let me get some great turnouts on them. We've got another concert tomorrow, mate. See if we can pull another one off. We had a great turnout again last week, great band. Stewie Crew, we got them. Farmers Market at Starfield United Methodist Church is every Wednesday through September. So, you swing out, buy some cucumbers and tomatoes, swing out to the concert, have a good time, go home before dark. All right, that's all I got, except I would like to really thank, a big thank you towards Public Works. They put in some pretty extra time and pretty good time for all the citizens after that storm. Kind of a surprise to everyone. Feel real bad for the couple of guys that got their powers squished down there. That's the way it goes. So, thank the guys for that. I don't see your report, but I would really like everybody to know that they kind of went above the on on that. We even helped an old man that was getting pooped out out there at the tree dump. I see, don't we jump right out and help that old man? Good for you. All right, that's all I got. City Administrator Bill, you got a report for us?
Yep, sure report, you're back in. And just, we appreciate your flexibility and letting us do those things for the cleanup and flexibility of how we take care of our good old community. Should do it.
Yeah, I'm a short reporter.
Yeah.
Good for you.
The half show.
That's my quarter show there. Finance, report?
I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, we opened a new sweep account beginning of July, and just in the month of July alone, we got sixty-five hundred dollars in interest on me that was sweeping into that account. However, I noticed that the rate was incorrect versus what they told us it was going to be, so we actually should have gotten about ten thousand, almost ten thousand in interest. So, they're going to correct it for us and retro it back to the first of July, or whenever it was opened. So, that's good news, we're earning more interest. Um, and also, I'm working on the budget. And if you have any requests or changes or need, let me know. I'd like to do a special meeting before the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth at five o'clock to discuss it.
All right. We should be able to make that work. Any other questions for Kelly? All right, thanks, Kelly, for all the work. Public Works, Sean, you got a report?
Yep, report's in there. Uh, one thing I want to bring up that I didn't put in the report yet, but the swimming pool, we were looking at resurfacing the dinosaurite surface. It's due, uh, we have some leaks going on there. We're hoping to correct some of the leaks because of the condition of the shell. But the early bids that came back are to the point where we need to go out for advertising because of the cost of it to go through the process. We're hoping to start this as small and get it done as small, so we're not pushed up against opening in the spring, because you never know what spring throws at you. Because we have to advertise and go through this, not a hundred percent sure we'll make it work, but we're going to try. Otherwise, we'll have it, but it has to be completed by bid day so we can get it opened up in time for getting it next year as part of the specs. So, just a heads up on that.
Have you started reaching out for your bids yet or not?
We have two bids, and the bids were high enough that we got a it pushes us over the threshold where we have to advertise. So, it slows us down, because it would have been nice just to award off what we got back for bids, but we have to advertise now, so.
Is there a lot of people on to do that, or not?
No. One of the bids we got signed out was three, one's maybe out of Illinois, something like that.
All right. Any other questions for Sean?
The two parking lots.
Oh, oh, the parking lots at Barri Caves, as you guys notice, have been disconnected, and we have them coned off. We are going through the process of seeing what this is going to do with them disconnected. Well, they're going to stay disconnected, and we will look at whether we're going to move the parking lot or the driveway around at the S Y A building so that it doesn't interact where all the activity is there. But we're going to try it this way after the street project was finished up there, and this was part of the street project. So, if you guys go up there, you'll see where it's coned off, not where they're no longer able to go through there. So.
So, the new west entrance will be for the Ball Field Complex, basically only. Obviously, if Summer Fest, then people are going to mix and match, but that's the idea we want to try out, experiment with. And then where the big lawn parking lot is, that would be for all that S Y A activities. Rest of the park activities.
But the intersection coming meeting there, the driveway that was there for the Ball Fields before was close to the intersection, which makes for not a safe area there. As much traffic as you're getting with the smoothies up there. That's why it was closed on and moved to the side off of the lot.
So, at least for now, it'll be experimental. We'll see how the season goes with the different sports, the different activities. And if we be like John said, we'll look at any adjustments, maybe at a future date.
Can we also increase the, the softball complex?
Yeah. Some of the rock from there was used to increase the size of the parking lot to have a softball complex.
All right, any other questions for Sean? Thanks, Sean, and make sure you thank the guys we gave them.
We'll do fast.
All right, City Engineer Jenna, you got a report for us?
I think we've covered most of it. When the eleventh is paved open last week, there was already bikers going down the trail. And we're getting ready for bids for more, so just keep going.
Perfect. Thanks for pushing BP a little bit. Any other questions for Jenna? All right. Nate, have you got anything besides, you just want to be here for the aides, or what?
Um, mostly just here for the aides, but we do have, or the pages, but we have, um, our end of the summer tie-dye party is Thursday from one to six, and there will be dilly bars.
So, what's? So what's?
Dilly.
Page eight, eight or page, what's the difference?
Uh, so library page is like a basic kind of shover and then, um, and then the next level up is um, they can be a person in charge in the venue.
Thank you. Brandon, you got a report for us tonight?
Yeah, report's in there, um, we had an extremely busy July, we had seventy-six calls for service, eighteen fireworks, fifty-eight EMS. So not quite double, but pretty close to double what an average month is for us. August hasn't started out too much better, but we have kind of seen it tapered down after the first week or so. Other items, the F four to F five fifty chassis that was ordered in June, um, is due to arrive already here, end of August, mid-September. So we'll have that in-house, so that way when the manufacturer's ready to put the body on it, we'll have that all ready along with, I'm working on radio and all the equipment uh, for that. Uh, and then had another successful Fourth of July fireworks display. So we've got our business meeting, thank the committee members who took time out of their Saturday to get everything prepared and launch those and clean up afterwards. Just added a note in there that, uh, just 'cause I've had some comments, we were not contacting the staff EMS as we have been in the past for uh, Summer Fest events, the runs or the dance. Um, so just a reminder to energy, event organizers to contact us in advance, we're happy to help out and participate wherever we can. Uh, we just need to know about it in advance so we can get people lined up, so. Uh, that's all I had for July update, unless you have any questions for me.
We really want to thank you for that fireworks, I haven't seen the rankings this year, but I think by us, we're one, we're like fifth or sixth best in the state.
And we're usually pretty low, pretty far.
We're up in the top ten of the best fireworks in the state, that's, thank you guys for doing that. Any other questions for Chief? All right, thanks.
Wow, this uh.
Jake's not here, so no crew directory report. I'll take this committee commission board reports, chamber of Congress, nothing in the packet here. E D A H R A, we got a meeting coming up, we've uh, had to run through the programs, the deadlines came and went for some of our home improvement and our commercial improvement. Now we just need to finish them up by the first of the year, but we're already looking at what maybe we can change for next year or something else we can do. Finance?
Just the meeting, we have a next council.
Perfect, library?
Uh, meeting next week.
Park board?
Uh, met last night, we were talking about um, shuffling some projects around and um, looking at um, potentially lights at the ball fields and things like that.
Personnel? P and Z?
That's what I'm thinking for last week.
I'm getting a busy time last week, public safety?
I was supposed to submit my report, so it'll be in the next one. Uh, obviously Night to Unite went good, uh, we had no complaints, which was kind of surprising, usually we collect one or two, but we didn't have any, so that was good.
My grandson's not happy to want to.
Well, that's all right, he'll get over it. Uh, another set of our checks are compliance tobacco and alcohol checks. We had uh, three of them fail on twelve. So we ran and get those three that had failed again, and they all passed. So, three of them failed, last year's three of them failed as well, so.
Same here?
We do more, no, one of them was the same, but we won't talk about who failed. If you guys want to know about that, we can do it after, we can talk about that stuff later, so. I don't know, three out of fifteen failed. I was happy when we went back and they were on top of it, which it should have been, but it is what it is, so. We'll just keep doing those, keep on the toes.
Thanks for doing that, thanks for all the stuff you do and stuff. Public Works, nothing tonight, ready?
Uh, report's in your packet, mainly just community updates um, by everybody, so sampling to see what's happening around the region.
Roll call?
Um, uh, they're working on, we're working on the um, transportation plan. So what they've done, or the information you got there is a link, website link for anybody in the county to reference or take a look at, as well as all the units.
Transit Advisory Committee?
A report.
Okay. We've got some communication in here. From Cleveland Ship, Greater Rochester, classic, you can keep that if you want to. Takes us to the open mic. City council welcome and encourage participation with community members, please keep in mind that your comments must be per the city business. Must also adhere to that privacy rule, so no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect any action when the council's E V is very reserved, we also request a conference be limited to four minutes. As the speaker, it'll be recognized only once, at this time, we ask anyone who would like to address the city council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. No one wants to do it, so we should do it. Motion of the E V to debate. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.